All right, welcome to the workshop today. What's it going to be, eight fifteen, two thousand and eighteen? No, it's number twelve, two thousand and nineteen. I'm confused. But every year we try to visit select board goals, priorities, things. We're a little late in getting into it this year because lots of reasons, but still we want to have a good discussion about same. Audrey's provided a list of the last discussion we had was on or around August of two thousand and eighteen, over a year ago, about some of the priorities and goals and strategies. And we never did fill in sponsoring select board member column, which we probably should. But other than that, we can start. I suspect the most efficient way to start, and I'm open to suggestions, is for each of us to verbalize whether priorities remain the same, or changed, or added, or whatever, so we can populate the matrix a little bit more effectively for two thousand and nineteen. Agreed, or want to do something another approach? No? So with that, then, I suggest would you start? Who would like to start discussion on priorities and goals?
I'll jump right in. Not a lot has changed for me. It's interesting looking at this from last year and comparing it to kind of what's changed. And I think not a lot in my mind has changed in terms of goals and priorities. I had three things that I talked about specifically last year. And I would keep them all on there and maybe make a couple of changes. In terms of communication, we talk about internal communication, I think regularly, and it's just something that I think is going to be constant upkeep to make sure that we're doing a good job staying in touch with each other and staying on top of stuff. And it's never going to be perfect, but I think that, you know, we've been pretty effective about knowing when we need to be better about it and when we're doing good. So I do think that that should be a continued focus because the more that we're at least on the same page in terms of having the same information, it makes all of our jobs a lot easier.
That's a good point, Taylor, because I'm actually not sure that when we talked about that, we were talking about internal communication so much as external communication, which of course probably will always be and certainly continues to be and maybe will always be something that can and should be improved. But I don't know that we've actually talked that much about internal communication. It kind of comes up every once in a while when usually when there's a breakdown.
Usually when there's a problem, right.
And then we all kind of try to do better, but it's such a fine line between the, you know, what can happen in select board meetings and what feels like a breach of, you know, the transparency provisions and how much can we each be talking to each other and what should be reserved for meetings. But you can never fit, there's so much going on in Camden that not everything can, you know, ever be fit into a meetings.
And, yeah, I agree, and just if you don't mind, just one thing I've struggled with a little bit sometimes is I feel often like I'll look at an agenda, I'll get an agenda from Janice, and it will be put together, and I'll say, why is this on the agenda? Why is that on the agenda? And a lot of discussions, and this isn't any kind of criticism of anyone that's putting things together, all relevant, all important. And I just think, you know, what's the background of this? When did this conversation happen and with whom? And I just, I would love to be better prepared, and part of that, I think, is our own, you know, responsibility, but some of it is a lax, just a, so much, like Allison said, that so much is going on that not everyone always gets looped in. And that can be, I will say that I have had moments of sheer frustration when I've just said, you know, whoa, okay, this just appeared. And it's not always on an agenda, it can be other, but it's definitely a good point that these two are making.
No, all valid points, I think it's extremely important. We discuss it many, many times. On the positive side, I think from Allison's point, she mentioned that there's so much going on.
Exactly.
You know, honestly, I spend some time here every day because I can, I do. So I'm at an advantage.
Not all five of us are ever going to be one hundred percent caught up.
We're interested in being caught up on every single thing.
That may be the other part of it.
I think that strength is to, I think that there's a strength in spreading around what people are good at, what people are passionate about too, as long as the communication is occurring.
Absolutely. I know sometimes, I know occasional one-on-one meetings, coffees and the like helps a lot because we can discuss things one-on-one. Now, I think there should be no limitation on what two individuals here discuss with each other for information. I'm always happy to share what I think I know. It gets, but the challenge, it gets difficult when you're stuck into the written kind of a thing, and it's sort of, you know, there could be, for example, a chair report that could be done, something like that.
Yeah, I was wondering that.
You know, it could be a, you know.
Have you kind of gotten away from, you know, me writing like memos and stuff as backup information in the packet? Would that be helpful if we kind of go back to doing that more frequently?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think a combination of those two, maybe, because I do hear a lot about stuff, some of which is important, well, you know, and that's the problem too, the filter. I'm my own filter. I may not be your filter.
Yeah.
And I think things are obvious to the most casual observer. Uh-uh. You know, I get that all the time, you know, you think I know that, well, I don't, you know, that, that's part of the problem too, I have to admit that. But I think we could do more chair reports, town manager reports on a, not a daily basis, but on a regular basis that would allow some information. And then if you have a question, you can pick up the phone and call, because those documents, in my opinion, should be for information and not for debate online, obviously you know that.
That's exactly how I feel too, is the information and then we have the discussion.
And you can call Allison, or I can call Taylor or somebody, whatever, you know, you know, whatever, whoever, that we can have, you know, clarification, and that works. And it stays within the bounds of the restrictions on the select board not debating something online or whatever the heck.
Right, and the quorum, the public meeting rules.
Yeah. I mean, I also feel like there can be sometimes way too much discussion that it's, that happens outside of the meeting, not in the sense of breaking any quorum rules. I mean, there's no, there's no law against, you know, Mark and I trying to resolve our differences over coffee, and some of that is definitely good, but what I-
Wait, wait, what differences?
We actually don't really have.
I was going to say.
That's why you were a, you were a safe example, because it wasn't going to be-
Thanks.
Jenna and I, on the other hand, feel quite comfortable.
We have our moments.
Life long. But sometimes I realize that when I'm in the actual meeting, I've done, Bob is one who I, you know, I, sometimes, sometimes we'll really disagree on something, especially when it's brought up in the, you know, initial agenda meeting, or I'll say, you know, totally disagree with that, and then we, we work so much on that outside of the meeting that I realize we, the public, I think, loses.
Perception.
It's really hard to know what, how, you know, the balance between, if we took, if we resolved all of our differences publicly, that would be, I wouldn't have any real problem with doing that, but it would be really time consuming and inefficient.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
So making sure that the public still gets, say, I think that even can happen with town staff, you know, the working things out with you or with Jeremy, I see it happen with Jeremy a lot because, with me at least, that I'll really, you know, disagree with some kind of an interpretation or the language of some kind of inordinance, and then by the time we get to the meeting, it's, it sometimes even colors the way the conversation, like even the way I think Jeremy presents it, if he, that the public misses out a little bit on some of that initial introduction.
There's a lot of nuance.
Because it's awkward, because he's sort of talking to us, but, you know, some of us might know something already, or he knows that we disagree with something or agree with something, so it's definitely a balance, I don't know.
Yeah, I totally agree. I wrote balance of internal communication.
Good word.
But memos, I think, are just for the, from the public's perspective too.
Public record, public record stuff.
The agendas that go out, a lot of the time, it's, even just the way we word things on agendas, it's apparent to us, like, oh, that defederalization issue, you know, the number of words needed to communicate what we're actually going to be talking about. It gets a little easy for us just to be like, you know, refer to things in a way that's not.
Well, I think right now we have a great opportunity with what we've been talking about with media, some of the media interpretations and things that we feel like we know, and a lot of the people who have taken an interest are aware of, but, you know, clearly somewhere there's some kind of a breakdown outside.
Absolutely.
And I don't think that that actually has anything to do with internal communication necessarily, but it's a good timing for us to start working on.
External communication, I agree. Taylor, you have anything else on your?
Yeah, I think just kind of a final thought on the communication thing, like, it obviously won't be effective if we talk about it now and then we wait another year to talk about it again. I think that like, to me, it seems like the type of thing where something will pop up maybe next month where, hey, here's an opportunity to improve communication specifically in this way.
Yeah.
Whoever it is that notices that should just speak up and think that's going to be something.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Improve slowly over time as we notice opportunities to do that. This was a generic one last year, but I'm going to stick with it, making the town more accessible and vibrant place for young people, families, businesses. I think that ties into, they kind of, everything that we talk about.
Economic development.
But I think specifically we were talking about, yes, economic development, definitely. We were talking about affordable housing, and really, I mean, it really all comes together for me under that general headline, so for me, that's just kind of a, something that moves me forward on a number of issues. EMS definitely should stay on there, I think that that has been a long road so far, but I think that we've gotten to a point where there are a lot of people aware that there are improvements that we can make in EMS in our community, and there's more than one way to do it. So I think we have some, you know, a good amount of stakeholders kind of paying attention now and discussing things. The hospital has gotten involved recently and is interested in talking more about it, so I think that that's going to provide an interesting point of view for looking at our EMS system, not just from municipal standpoint or from a service standpoint from people, but also from the hospital side. So for me, it's really important, I think there is room for improvement, but I think there's a smart way to do it that works for everybody in a responsible way. Specifically, I guess that, I'll leave it there for now.
Okay.
But there are a number of other things on here that other people have identified as priorities that I definitely agree with.
Absolutely. Do we want to go clockwise or counterclockwise? Jenna?
I'm happy to, as I think I probably made my case as much, I think that we're all, it sounds like we're all on the same page about communicating, improving communication. I still would like to improve external communication. I think that's really important, and I think the new website is going to be a great tool for that. But it also has to do with content and upkeep, and so I want to keep that goal on there as that sort of double-sided communication goal. I think the, I think we can make a case for the fact that internal communication is a totally different thing. That's sort of our own function versus our function to the public, but they do feed one another. I agree with Taylor that, particularly regarding affordable housing, but also I think it was Allison last year that talked about economic diversity, and I think that that's another thing that makes this town appealing to families and, and visitors of all ages, all income levels, is to have something that you can go and do for just about free, or go get, you know, a hot dog or a sandwich and go do, to have some things that are going on in town, like, and I am remiss to use this, but the fish ladder in Damascata, you have something that's, people want to go see. We have attractions, but also business, a good balance of business and attraction and making ourselves welcoming to some of those different ideas. But I think, you know, to kind of bounce around a little bit, and I apologize, but figuring out this housing thing, to me, is just, I mean, I would, I think the word crisis is not inappropriate. I think that it's-
Lack of.
That we are in a crisis, and I think, I hear this, you know, I see houses, even homes to buy, go on the market for $250,000, and it's tiny little house, and it's a great bargain, and it's closed within four days because there's no inventory. And you, but rentals, affordable housing, trying to incentivize year-round offerings for folks that are renting seasonally, to just do what we can there. Of course, I think that one, one of the things Mark talked about last year was improving our relationship with the library. I'd like to say that we're doing that. I think that we're, that we're well on the way to carving some paths forward, and I really appreciate everyone that's been involved with that, which I think is everyone at this table. But I think that meeting that we had with them was, really gave a lot of clarity. I think that we've been able to move forward in a positive way from there and with different initiatives that, that are mutual goals. And so other than that, I really think that the development of Sagamore Farm and the Tannery would be two other things that I think they just need to rise to the top and just be kept kind of in, on our, on a burner that's turned on. Maybe low simmer, but they need to be something that we're continuously looking at. And not just sort of, I feel like they constantly fall through that sieve of communication, and that's something that we do talk about a lot, but that, and having, you know, good check-ins with Jeremy when he has something come in that's exciting and that's appropriate to share, that we all can kind of talk about things and also get a community perspective.
Perfect. Thanks, Jenna. Mr. Mark.
Just to dig in with the Sagamore thing a little bit.
Yeah.
Part of me says, like, yeah, we've got to solve that problem, or, you know, make sure we're taking advantage of that resource and finally conquer that. And part of me thinks that that turns into something that is really time-consuming for very little benefit, or I think it's a great resource that could potentially offer some housing solutions, but it's also a little bit farther out than, than we would ideally like to see for that urban infill approach and digging in where there's water and sewer. I wouldn't mind seeing it just go on the market or put out a request for proposals or, just to see what, I think we're lacking a perspective of what even is possible there. I want to make sure we really avoid just assigning it to Jeremy and having him brainstorm with committees, because it doesn't, what we, what we all think would be wonderful there, or what anybody in the community thinks would be wonderful there, doesn't help if it's not actually possible, so calling up-
Right.
I'd love to see us call it a vesta housing or something, or, but that's only my, if somebody else has a clear vision for Sagamore, then-
I actually think you articulated it better than I did. I sort of use this colloquial, let's keep it on a burner. That was kind of where I was, was-
That's the way I interpret it.
I think we're on the same page, we just are saying it.
No, that's good clarification.
Yeah, it was a really good clarification.
I just don't want to take up too much staff's time.
You're chasing rabbits.
Right.
Down holes.
Not intentionally, of course, but that's what you wind up doing sometimes, you're absolutely right.
Right, I don't want it to be a staff priority, dedicate a bunch of time.
Well, sometimes it's very efficient, especially in economic type development, of crusting things off the list completely because of some practical reason, like, you can't do it there because of whatever reason. That's, that helps to narrow down the potential options you may, or may not have with a site like that of seventy-seven acres.
Are you suggesting it might be more, more efficient to assign it directly to Jeremy or to have the committee involved?
I know, basically, I think it's not worthy of any additional staff time right now unless it, I mean, unless it brings us to something really concrete, like, like knowing what the options are, or, I don't think we have, I don't know how to say it, but I don't think it's working, what we've done for all this time. There's a lot going on and just-
There is, there is.
Be less about brainstorming and more about actual, you know, to answer the question, okay, we put out a really good RFP and we got zero responses. That would be illuminating, or maybe what Rockford just did with the, why did Rockford get so few responses, do you think there?
I'd recommend with Sagamore, and you probably don't want to go too into the weeds with this, but I don't think putting out an RFP for a site like that is going to be very helpful. I think it's more like contacting a vesta or an organization like that and just saying, do you want to come look at the site, and if you're interested, do you want to put in some sort of proposals?
Right.
There are a number of entities-
They're not going to scour every possible thing.
That's the way to approach it, you go reach out for a market pull rather than just sit back and, yeah, sitting around.
And you get a good litmus test as well.
And I guess we've been kind of hesitant to do anything like this just because we understand it's sensitive and there's different opinions on what should be done.
Absolutely.
But I think that if, you know, affordable housing is on everybody's list.
Is.
We're actively getting inquiries from different housing developers who are responding to the MSHA proposals for elderly and workforce housing.
Right, 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 right.
So I guess given your level of interest, there's a level of interest amongst, you know, developers in Maine to do a project in the Camden-Rockland area.
Yeah.
I think maybe now the time is right to proactively go to them about Sagamore Farm and just see what the ideas are for it, if there are any. Maybe they look at it and say, this is totally unsuitable.
Exactly, exactly, exactly.
Be done in a way that doesn't take up a lot of time, where that's-
Yes, yeah. I mean, it's going to take up some time, but, I mean, it can be done in a way that we're not committing to anything, we're just looking for ideas, and it's not like, you know, Jeremy has to prepare all of this information and, you know, he'll be meeting with some people, which will take up time.
Yeah, visit the site. That's going to happen, right.
So that if it could, it would turn into something like, a proposal could be submitted that didn't take a huge amount of time for Jeremy, and then that could be reviewed, you know, so it's-
I mean, we'd be kind of putting it on them to do a lot of the work instead, you know, and it's less work than him sort of sitting down and crafting this proposal with all kinds of input from you and-
We present them an opportunity, you know.
That's a starting point too, at least in terms of like concrete ideas.
Well, it presents them with an opportunity and then they can run that ball home if they want to.
Every developer has, whole department does nothing but that. They look at land opportunities and they make a decision about-
Run that ball back to us and see what we say.
Ten-foot pole or whatever, so, yes, doesn't take a lot of time.
And I think you create a level of expectation when you put out like an RFP, that there's going to be some sort of follow-through and-
Yeah, writing RFPs takes time.
It does, especially when you want to do it in a way where you're bringing everyone along with you.
Yeah, there's a way to do that.
I like this approach.
Yeah, Mark, you want to dig into your child?
Just a side note to Sagamore, there are people, I mentioned, I think at the last meeting, that there are people looking at the Blowing property to do housing.
Yes.
And there's some, you know, situation that it may or may not work, but Jeremy also said, because they're looking for, I don't know if it's low cost, but mid cost, they're not looking for high-end kind of stuff.
Market rate, kind of.
But he said, you know, Sagamore is basically almost across the street, and he said, we have another site here that might be good for housing, so they're good, they may look at that, so we'll see what happens. What I did was, I don't want to, I didn't want to look at this, what I've done, because I'm thinking about what makes, what have I been thinking about lately, what's impacting me, so I made some notes, and I'm waiting for it to show up, and it's not showing up yet, it'll be, it'll show up in a second. Number one for me is, and it's sort of more overarching, you know, what big solutions are that may help all of the smaller things. And the first thing on my list was energy. And solar is a big part of that. And one of the conversations we had in, one of the meetings I was in, somebody was complaining about the snowball, you know, the snowball takes half of the town's energy bill, you know, and yet it's a, it's good for a lot of people, but it's not for the whole town.
True.
And, but we thought that, and this is at the energy meeting, you know, if we had solar for all of the town's properties, then we're not, then we're not looking at supplying energy to a specific place that's not for the whole town. If we can supply energy, a solar farm for the energy for all of the town, then the snowball makes a lot more sense economically, economically, energy-wise, to do that. As part of that solar thing, looking at it, like to pursue that because that would help, I'd also like to pursue it, that if we can get a large enough property, maybe there's a way to involve, you know, people that have, you know, low income, let them share in some of the energy costs so that we can lower electric bills for some of the people that really need it. Maybe there's some way to do that, make it, it's not just for the commercial part of the town, or the business part of the town, but it's also for some of the citizens as well, to see what we could do. Because in, the thing about the solar is, we'll, one, save us a lot of money long-term, that's one thing we know about the solar, it will save hundreds of thousands of dollars if we, over years, if we get it for the snowball, for all the town municipal stuff. But we could also use it to help our citizens, which I think would be a great thing. And that's my other thing's not coming up right now, hold on. Let me find the first note I made. So that's one of the things I'm thinking about overall, if we can get that done. And as part of that, we talked about Camden efficiency as helping people with, with some of the trust funds we have, doing, you know, some insulation, some window cozy stuff that they help as well. I'd like to see us move forward that, that's something we can do to help people right now. Second thing overall is dealing with sea level rise and how we're going to handle that with the landing, with Harbor Park and Montgomery Dam is part of that as well. I like your reply, by the way, very much. I saw that, it's very frustrating to have, people respond to things that they haven't learned everything about yet. And that's one of the problems with social media and misinformation and, you know, signs out on, on store, storefronts that, you know, people don't understand what's going on, but I thought your reply is really good. So that's my second thing. Number three, and again, looking to deal with economic development. And we're having some meetings, there's a sort of a subgroup, myself and Deb Hall and some other people, fiber optic for the town, for every location in the town, you know, and that's a conundrum and how to get it done, but it will make such a difference. I was talking to somebody that I work with that lives in Belfast, and they were talking about, they needed them to upload something for me. And these days, a lot of people don't understand that the difference between upload speed and download speeds are extreme. And everybody seems to be happy right now, why do we need more? I can watch Netflix, I can watch Amazon. But what happens is for a business situation, if you're going to have people coming and working out of their houses or even small businesses, we need a more robust system. The people couldn't, they have to usually drive away from the house, and they have cable at their house, and go into town to find a place that has higher, higher upload speed so they can send me what I need. They can't do their business with the local cable that they have. And that's really important because that will make a huge difference for people coming. I've talked about, you know, people coming, SIF attracts a huge amount of filmmakers from all around the country, and as people come and they see this town and, wow, I'd love to live here, and, you know, if, gee, if they had great speeds and do stuff, I can come here, I can commute to New York when I do, I can commute to Los Angeles, you know, but if we can attract them with housing, with, with the, you know, the ability to do their job, it's important. You know, it's, it's sort of like, the analogy I make is years ago, everybody was really thrilled with their BlackBerries. This is terrific, this works, I don't need anything else. And then the iPhone came out, and it's like, wow, I never even realized the possibilities. And I think that's where a lot of people are with cable, and right now, is, I think it's fine, it's great, I have everything that I need, until someday they realize they don't. When something new comes along and they say, well, I can't do this, maybe it's, it's medical help, where you can do the back and forth medical stuff, and you can't do that from a lot of places now. There's so much coming that people aren't even thought about yet, and we need to be prepared for that.
Mark, can I ask you about that, the fiber optic at some point?
Absolutely.
I'll let you finish, but I have a question about that.
And next, going into the same thing is, one thing that's bothered me for a long time is dark streets, which ties into Airbnb and all of that, and I think that's an important thing to look at. And one of the things I've been thinking about, and I've seen it in some of the other, and this is a problem that's worldwide, they're dealing with it, and really, you know, populous cities, Vancouver and San Francisco and Amsterdam, where people are just buying houses and Airbnb them, and we're stuck with dark streets, we're stuck with, you know, in the summertime, we have tremendous amounts of people here because it's a really popular time to rent a house. But in the wintertime, a lot of the houses are dark, which affects our year-round livability, affects our downtown businesses, and the ability to have things other than just t-shirt shops, and to have our stores and our business that keeps us a livable place. You know, we have, now we have incredible school system with the new school coming up. And one of the things that I thought we should, we should look at, and it'll be popular with some people, maybe not popular with others, is support reducing the amount of, right now we have a limit on you have to rent for seven days, if you're doing it yourself. I, I wouldn't mind reducing that for people that want to do Airbnb, that live in their houses. And if they're going away for two weeks and they want to rent their house for two weeks, I have no problem with it, or if they're going away for- Or if they're going away for a long weekend and wanna rent it for a long weekend, that would be great. But where I'd like to see a change is for people that are buying houses and don't live in them, I would like to treat them differently, because I think that would make a difference. But I'd also like to make, not necessarily a negative thing, I'd like to see a positive thing where, if we can encourage them, and I don't know how, what the legalities are, through tax breaks, through however, however we could do it, to encourage them to make it more beneficial to rent long-term than short-term, then I think that might make a big difference.
Yeah.
If we could say, "Hey, you can do Airbnb, but there's, maybe there's, there's costs, there's penalties involved."
I think that's like a...
We want, I wanna hire a lobbyist.
What's that?
We should...
To incentivize, I agree with you.
There are local offices, there are a few things that, if the state would let the towns do a little bit more, we can, you know, just like with the different ordinances that towns pass, and then sometimes they become state laws, because they work, the state, I mean, the state just doesn't allow us to do that at all right now, and we should, I think we should...
Our legislative delegation and the Maine Service Center Coalition, I think that's all stuff that...
We can, we can go to them, we can go to Vicki and Dave, but I think that's more difficult, because I don't want it to be negative, I don't wanna penalize people, I wanna encourage people to give us long-term rentals.
Yep.
Positive reinforcement.
Because that's the way to go forward, and so if we can find a way to do that, to give them incentives to rent long-term. And I have a friend that has a house, near Hasma Pond, that, they rented out, and they used to do Airbnb, and we had this discussion, and he said, "Yeah, it's sort of a pain doing Airbnb, and, you know, finding clean every week." And they changed to long-term rental, and he says, "It's so much easier, it's so much better, we get, you get a good tenant in, they're there for a year or two, and it's wonderful, we don't worry about the house, we don't, you know, we don't have to go in and clean up all the time." And there's a really positive, I saw a really positive change here, because they tried it. And that's one of the big problems we have.
We could give them free passes to the Opera House if they rent their houses long-term.
Ski passes.
Ski passes, or we could do that kind of incentive possibly.
We could, we could do that, let me see if I...
Anything else, Mark?
The amenities.
EMS, of course, we talked about, there's so many more people about that.
Ambulance rides.
Mark's turn to talk, please.
And, there we go, here's the new one. Couple of short-term things, but those are my long-term things, sea level rise, energy, fiber optic, I think can make a huge difference for the town and housing. Short-term, the park, the snowball park, beyond the snowball, you know, things there, you know, Tubing Hill, we hear about that more than anything else. The tennis courts are a disaster, the fences there are embarrassing, the backstop is sore turnout, they have to put boards along the bottom of the backstop to keep the balls from rolling under it, because it's such a mess. It's, for a town like this, it's embarrassing to have a park like that. I would love to see that worked on. And then lastly, as you know, one of my great loves is this building in the Opera House, and we're already talking about doing, you know, small improvements every year technology-wise to the Opera House, and I've talked to Audra and Juniper about some new ones that can make a big difference, and actually save us money for not having to rent here. So that, that's a small thing, but those are, those are the things I'm thinking about.
Thank you, Mark. Ms. Allison.
I'd like to see the bricks that are falling out fixed.
Now, there's a good goal.
Goes along with Mark's improvements.
That's a good goal. Little things like bricks not hitting your head, yeah.
No more bricks falling out, cap it at nine.
But reasonable risk assessment.
In preparation for climate change. No, I think everything has been very well articulated by everyone else, actually. I, just a few little things, I wanna make sure that we aren't caught by surprise with any of the wastewater improvements, the site plan, the, it's been a while since we've talked about that, and...
Wastewater project?
Yeah, I mean, it's millions and millions of dollars that's going into that, and I know a lot of that is just simply technology upgrades, but it's in a really important area of the town as far as, you know, from my perspective, it's along the river, it's right where we hope that the Riverwalk will go, it's, there are a variety of short and long-term possibilities for the Riverwalk and where it could go, and I wanna make sure that we take every opportunity to maximize the amount of public space that can be kind of reclaimed over there, if possible, sometimes maybe even if it costs a little bit more. Currently, we have the whole thing fenced off, which we'd need to, because of, you know, for danger reasons. But there's a lot of, there's a lot of real estate over there, and maybe not all of it needs to be fenced off. I'm worried that it's gonna get down, that if we don't start talking about it more, it's we're gonna get near the end, and somebody's gonna have an objection, possibly me, and we're gonna say, "Well, it's too late to move the transformers," or, you know, I don't know, it just seems like, we haven't talked about that a lot, and so, you know, the school has, when schools builds a new school, they have a building committee. We haven't really demanded any kind of, you know, the same process, and not all of it is appropriate for this type of a project, just a lot of, you know, some of it's just technical stuff. But then, I think the, the main thing, I agree with everything that has been said by others, but lately, I've really gotten to the point where I feel that we need a staff person who can take on some of the climate, climate change preparedness activities, the, and some other environmental issues as well. Each year, we end up, during the watershed school stuff is just one example where we oftentimes, there's this flurry of focus on the, on climate change and...
Piece of it. They get one session to do the work, and that's it for the year.
Right, and then, and we kind of, you know, we focus on it then, and we all, you know, we joined the Global Covenant of Mayors, which I, you know, obviously entirely support. I was actually just looking to try to see if there's some kind of conference that we could go to, or if they're, you know, they're...
Host.
Or host, maybe. One of the things we had talked about recently was...
We should all go to Paris for the next Paris Accords meeting?
Amen.
I actually looked on their website, and I couldn't find a set conference to pitch to everybody, but it would be good for us to be, try to expose ourselves to the ideas and what, you know, what is happening in other places that have signed on to this, and not just have it be, you know, whatever is brought to us through, you know, the track committee. It's a goal that we all share, it's a goal that the community shares, but there's a lot to do, and there's a lot of emerging research that happens all the time, there are examples of what different towns are doing, there's, you know, just in terms of, you know, everything from processing the Rich Rough Garden report and figuring out, well, what should the town really do? How are we gonna offset our carbon contributions from the snowball? Does it make sense to look at wind? Are there any of our dams that can adequately produce hydropower? Are we taking advantage of the millions and millions of dollars that are available in federal and state funding right now? Camden actually falls into a, you know, a category of places that are very, that have been targeted for special funding because of the large amount of our town that lies within the shoreline zones, both with the river and the ocean. And I, I mean, I don't know, I'm curious what everybody else thinks. It, initially, it felt like, okay, if we just all, you know, if the select board just all defines this as a goal, and we all say we care about these things, then that will just translate into everything that the town does. In reality, it's a ton of work to apply for the grants, to, you know, conduct the public engagement sessions, to revisit the comprehensive plan, the downtown master plan, the, all of these things. I'm worried that if we just rely on, you know, the activism of, you know, certain select board members that have time to do it here or there, or we just keep throwing it more on, like, Audrey, we want you to do this, we want you to do that, that we're, it's not gonna get done to the level that it, it could be.
I mean, I can, I can just confirm now that I think that the level of expectation around, I mean, both community expectations, select board expectations...
Even the water quality monitoring in the harbor, for example, and...
I think the level of expectation around what we should be doing outstrips our capacity to do that work.
A vision for how we might...
Absolutely agree, sure, Mark. Absolutely agree with you, that's absolutely true. This, this has been done in other, other, first of all, generally, the objective, I totally agree with, I think the objective that Allison portrayed is absolutely perfect. The solution to it, I'm not quite sure about yet, because the staff function thing, you gotta be really careful what the cross-section the staff person is, because this is a, there's a broad, broad field of activity that you can approach here. It doesn't diminish the need to do what Allison just presented, and I agree, you're right, but for the...
Maybe it's a couple contractor people, but...
Well, whatever it is, but I agree with you, you gotta take the view from 30,000 feet, bring it down to 15,000 feet, get certain things done per whatever time period, and stay at it, because it's not gonna, well, I'll know, it ain't gonna happen overnight.
To your point, I think, so say even, like, maybe ideal scenario for everyone, we do get another person to do all that work.
Right.
I think that the level of expectation is gonna grow exponentially to the results.
It does, it does.
I think it's more focusing on, like, what within, what within the sort of, you know, environmental sustainability, energy kind of realm are we most interested in, and what do we want somebody to focus on, and then how do we get there from...
It's really prioritizing the long list of things that should be done in this subject matter, so that we can attack the ones that are most important first, like we do with capital planning, it's the same thing.
But I think, I think as positions like this become more commonplace in communities, and they will, I mean, as we know with climate change, that if we have an opportunity to have the foresight and the ability to have the blessing of the voters, to get, they're in the budget committee, to hire a person like this, that I think these jobs are gonna be, that we have the opportunity to get someone really great before every town is, oh my goodness, I better hire a sustainability coordinator, or a, whatever we wanna call it.
Right, and some of it is just managing the grants that, that, some of which we already have, and some of which, which are, you know, we're responding to and needing to apply for on an ongoing basis. My hope is that we will get some funding, and that the position at, as, you know, for the, the climate resilience through the National Fish and Wildlife Federation is just one example of potential funding that we could receive, and so...
Position itself.
Yeah, at least a portion of it, because there's a town match component, and there's, a lot of that can be in kind, but...
That's a big deal.
So if part of that would be, you know, we can take some, there's, there are required community engagement aspects of all of this, required, you know, there's, there are reporting requirements, all of that can be put into the grant proposals. So, so far, what we've been doing is, we haven't been accounting for staff time, when we do our budgets for the grant proposals, we haven't been saying, okay, we're gonna need 25% of that for administrative costs, that's what a lot of nonprofit organizations do, they, they just allocate a certain amount of what they request for admin. And we kind of haven't been doing that, we've just been saying, okay, we'll just absorb this, all of our staff members will do a little bit more. But we could, if we increase our capacity to respond to the grants, then we can, I think it could be something that would just be, end up getting funded by grants in the long run, but we might, it, it might take some match contributions to get it started here. But we're, we're gonna miss out on tons of stuff if we can't, you know, if we, if we're just asking, okay, Jeremy, when you do all this and this and this, can you make sure to also incorporate the very latest in green stormwater infrastructure recommendations? He can do some of that, but it's gonna, inevitably, there are all these real-life, you know, immediate code needs and things that are just, that cannibalize a lot of time.
And other duty is assigned forever.
All right.
So I, you know, if we're actually going to make it a goal, we're gonna have to allocate some, some funding and staff person.
All right.
And I think it would save, it will save us money in the long run, but anyway. So that, yeah, then the only other, I guess that's, that's pretty much it for me. I, the, I just had one question, it made me think of it when Mark was talking about the incentives for the Airbnb stuff, and trying to, you know, affordable housing, and keeping this, the town economically diverse is really important to me, and I think we are losing the battle.
I agree.
By, in every possible way, look, you know, just look at what's happening to Cuzzies, even. It's like, the diversity of, you know, the types of businesses being open late, just, you know, the, it's just being squeezed out for this kind of vision of Camden that is...
Horse car.
But, right, and all geared toward very high property values in, you know, looking at, people are looking at their properties as investments and not as places to live. And obviously, it's always gonna be an investment, too, but it's, there's just too much of that. And so, I was wondering if there's something that can be done, can we restrict Airbnbs by, can we create, if we were to do a big housing project, for instance, could we then create an overlay zone or something where, in that area, short-term rentals would be...
Disallowed.
Just, you know, right, like completely disallowed, or...
It's a zoning ordinance, right?
Just like...
It would be absolutely limiting use of properties, that absolutely can be done.
So as new things, new housing starts to come, on, you know, how would you...
I mean, I think this gets back to the licensing.
It does.
Licensing them that we discussed.
Yes.
You know, and that's kind of how, that's the route that Rockland has gone, you know, first it was creating that licensing process, and then tracking how many were licensed, and their second step was to limit the number of licenses that they...
It's like a cat token, isn't it? Like, in the cities where the cat...
And they created a lot of staff functions.
Yes.
Certain number.
That's, yeah.
You gotta, you're gonna do something, you have to have people to do it, otherwise it doesn't get done.
Right. Yeah, and I mean, I do think there's, I mean, there's two different ways to do it. One, you can throw a lot of staff resources at it, two, you can, you can invest in a technology that can manage it for you.
Those are...
I know, I'm not sold on them being...
Right, right. Okay, anything else, Allison?
Um, no.
Okay, cool.
No, I mean, are we gonna keep talking about things a little bit, or are we...
About what? Do you have anything else you wanted to mention?
I mean, there might be, I may have...
Come back at it.
Jump in with a comment there.
Come back, absolutely. All great comments, and kind of, a nice thing about it, it's kind of focused, it's not scattered, little elements here and there, and also, a lot of you talks about nuances on a theme. That's great, mine is the same thing, nuances in the theme. I've always held, and talked about three priorities, that the priorities are, the financial planning, two, environmental focus, and three is economic development. Those are three priorities. Under those priorities, the goals have always been to control tax increases to something of, establish an objective and hold to it, allows us to manage the process better, because there are many demands on money that we see, $27 million of capital planning is on our capital planning list right now. Obviously, we're not gonna do that all in one year, et cetera. Absolutely an emphasis on fixing what we have before we consider too much new stuff. This town, many towns, every town, city in the country, has neglected somewhat, for good reason, infrastructure. It isn't just pipes and blah, 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 but sidewalks, roads, parks, a couple Mark mentioned, we gotta fix what we have, that's a prior, a goal. And also, I think we should, as a goal also, I, you know, I still wanted to have, continue our, no less than quarterly updates on, on what I call special project, financial entities in the town, which we are doing with the snowballs, we started just recently. We need to do the same thing with the Opera House, because we got, it's not that we're trying to, we just want everybody to understand what the financial situation is, and not make any decisions on anything, but I think it's important for our fiduciary responsibility to be cognizant of those elements. From environmental focus, yeah, one of the goals... From environmental focus, yeah, one of the goals is for me has always been to get the town 100%. The town 100% on renewable energy. We're only 65% at the moment or 60 something percent at the moment. That that's the interim goal. Two.
Hold on, what?
What?
We're we're at what percentage?
65.
That's only that's only counting electricity, though.
That's correct. Absolutely correct. Good good qualification. I was talking about not just total energy, but just electrical energy. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's only that. I'll get to the next part next, as far as other energy. Because I'm like, that's good, good, good differentiation, though. Very, very good. Thank you. Also, a town, a goal would be for the town to have a methodical approach toward energy conservation improvement. And that we're doing some of that now with this building we're in, with the public safety buildings. A long, long list of other stuff from an energy improvement. This is all within the confines of what the town owns and operates. Lastly, on a goal in the environmental, we develop a game plan for, to what Mark mentioned, which is renewable sources for residential, commercial. That's a whole different program. That's a whole different thing. It's rather complicated, by the way. But that's mean we shouldn't focus on that because you know what? This town, to their point, is about two megawatts of power for the town. There's about eight or nine megawatts to the rest of the town for residents and commercial. Just a conservative calculation. So not good enough to put your finger on the dike when it's got a crack downstream.
And one of the things that's come out of the the studies is that that the majority of the energy that's being used or being lost is in the older homes. That's where most electricity use is because of the inefficiency of the homes.
Absolutely.
And that's why in talking about doing a Camden efficiency where we can help them, help people.
Yep, it's all part of that. I agree. I totally agree.
New homes, let's, I just, I I have to just interject, and I know everybody probably is aware of this, but it it does come across like sometimes getting rid of old things is better so that you can have new things that are more energy efficient. And the number of windows and things that are dumped in our landfill, and nobody's calculating the carbon footprint of that and all of the new construction and all of the, so.
Yeah, I I think until the last bullet, this environment, well, in this bullet, actually, the environmental thing is, and that does frustrate me because I'm sometimes a little close to forests to see the trees, and that's a problem because of my background. But I do see that, oh, this is a good idea. They have no analysis or discussion about what the what the overall umbrella, the impact of what you're recommending is. You know, if you're, there are certain renewable sources that are not really environmentally friendly in in the overall umbrella.
Cycling of their solar panels. I mean, how is that?
Europe is going through a huge problem with that right now. Not to stop it, but just to identify it. That's what's most important. We have to understand those things. And that's why this is a very complicated equation, you know, I could go on forever on this one. But lastly, on the economic development, you've all said it already. And I, my first one was, I I called it reaching out to the to the building development entities that really know, whether they be public or private, they they do this all the time. They're gonna say, you know, and nobody's gonna touch that with a 10 foot pole because that Sagamore or Tannery, whatever, it ain't gonna happen. That's very important to do a mark. I call it a market pull rather than. Jeremy hasn't got the time to do all the other things. I also agree with the broadband thing. We at least need to understand what we have, what can be done and at what cost, et cetera, et cetera, and be knowledgeable on it. Because, yeah, the future with AI and everything else, artificial intelligence demands on the Wi Fi is just gonna get higher and higher and higher. Yes, to, we have to be cognizant of any external forces that may impact us economically to our residents or commercial businesses, both. That could be the rental thing. It could be other aspects. So we gotta pay attention to that. And lastly, on the economic development thing, we've said it many times, but we've got to reinforce. We've already had two or three discussions with recently with Knox County. And we've had other discussions about regionalization of the area. We've got to keep having at least discussions about regionalization.
Yeah.
Where where it makes sense, of course. That could be, you know, services. It could be whatever it might be. We have started some of that. It's very encouraging. And but everything I just said is you've already kind of mentioned. So it's just it's just just my, just I remain with those. I always will remain with those.
I just have a question about, to go back to fiber optic. I did ask a couple of people about it this summer because admittedly, it's one of those things that like you hear about it and I'm like, why do we need that? You know? I don't experience any problem personally in my home with my access to to internet. But upon further investigation, it does make sense to have fiber optic access. The problem is that, at least the way that I read it, is like exorbitant costs for the infrastructure to do that. So my question is, to me, it seems obvious that if we're gonna do that in a meaningful way, it has to be a regional approach and not just.
Well, that's why we're, right now, there's Jeremy, Deb Hall, myself, some other people talking on the board about just what are the challenges? We're just having sort of discuss, what are the challenges? What's the education process? And what are the possibilities? So we're looking into it. But much like we did the streetlights.
Yes.
The multi-town streetlights.
Yeah.
You know, it's, you know, public, private thing. But it's somebody that works in a business that's very dependent on it. See the need drastically.
Yeah, I think I think I agree. I'd like to hear more about it.
It's a great podcast called, from the Institute for Local Self Reliance, called Municipal Broadband Bits.
Bits?
Yeah, I'll send you a direct link to it. But the Institute for Local Self Reliance is has some other really good stuff also. But it it helped me understand it just from a, you know, we're always trying to talk about whether it makes sense for something to be a public responsibility or private responsibility, whether it be the ambulance or the water company or the. And it's it's interesting to see that even if we decide that there's no problem with broadband service or the level of service, there's a pretty good argument for the economics of municipalities taking it on and just not, it's it's a huge change right at first, so it requires a lot of planning. But it's it's interesting.
Yeah, remember, I think to underscore what Mark has said, and we all talk about broadband. Now, number one priority, well, number one, two, on both the comp plan and on the downtown master plan says jobs for attracting younger individuals to the area. There does live, the the actual scenario, there's people coming here, probably not to work in a factory because we don't have any. So they're gonna come here to work remote from their home. And if you're gonna do that, you really have to have the power of broadband. And and a lot of those people are probably not gonna be able to afford to buy in some of the neighborhoods which have the good broadband right now. They're gonna look more in the outskirts of town if they can find anything, to Jenny's point. Anything at all, but we, that's that's part of the equation, too.
Sorry, it's Community Broadband Bits.
Community Broadband Bits.
Yeah, I agree with that with that with that statement. And and certainly, there are a number of people that have businesses similar to what Mark has, where you work out of your home and it's kind of a necessity of it. That being said, I don't wanna, I also think it's important that we recognize the importance of the blue collar workforce in the community and tradespeople.
Absolutely. Right, which nobody's gonna be able to install internet in their house.
Did you get that right?
Bingo.
You got that right.
So the only reason.
Jobs right there, the installer.
He's gonna drill the hole.
It's important. And I think we can focus on something like broadband and that has an issue in different types of jobs. I just wanna make sure it's clear that, you know, in terms of my perspective, we're not taking the spotlight off of the importance of the blue collar jobs.
Oh, absolutely not. In fact, that's the biggest problem we have today, in my opinion.
Yeah, absolutely.
Huge shortage.
Country wise, here, it's really magnified.
It's really bad.
Expecting everything we're trying to do. But, okay, with that, we do have one member of the public. Would you like to say anything? Good. Just wanna make sure you're recognized.
I have a question. It's it looks.
I'm here listening to see if anything comes up about the short term rental issue.
Oh, okay. You missed because I already did that.
We did talk about.
Oh, perfect.
Okay, that's, I was wondering, because I know she sort of traded places.
Yeah, right. Tagged you.
Like the Bangor Daily News was.
No, no, no.
Somebody knew, I was like, oh.
I do have one question. I'd like to ask Audra. She's been listening.
Yes.
What do you have to say about this?
Well, there was one thought that came up. I mean, all of this is stuff that, it's good. We've talked about it before. This is kind of the third time we've talked about it. And I feel like every single time we have this workshop, things get a little bit more specific and it becomes a little bit clearer as to the direction that it, everyone seems to collectively wanna go in. So I think that's great. Like, this is, I think, the most productive one of these that we've had, and they get better every time.
Totally agree.
So anyway, that's, it makes it a lot easier from my perspective. Yeah.
Seems everything in a positive way. It's very, it's quite a scale.
It's very true.
Yeah.
One thing I'd like to add is.
Let her finish first.
So I guess, you know, let me just sort of go back to, it's, I guess it's always a matter of there's so much that we could focus on. What do we really wanna hone in on for this year as sort of the main, you know, the the main points that you really wanna make sure that I'm not dropping the ball on?
Right, right. And and because there's a wide, there's a wide breadth, there's a wide breadth of stuff along here. And that's why I try to bring it to more broad schemes. It's hard, we're not eliminating anything that's been mentioned, but that's really hard to answer. I think a lot of times, too, what happens is during the year, things change and priorities do change. And that's happened to us before. And some may call it diversion, but it's, that's what logically happens. We have a fixed staff size. We have, I think, in my mind, I leave it more to your creativity and your staff to determine where the opportunities are to to attack these various priorities and goals, knowing that they are our collective priorities, because it was us recognizing that not everything can get done. And what we are, we're in November now. We have seven months left of the fiscal year. It's not a lot of time. We've already prioritized ordinance work for June and some from beyond. So I really, I find it difficult to say any one, two, or three of the absolute.
Yeah, maybe a nice next step with this, which is something that we have never really done before, is I can go back to the department heads and say, this is the discussion the select board has had.
That'd be great.
Given that they've outlined these, maybe five, six things as sort of major priorities.
Right.
Based on what you know you have and other things that come up that, you know, you might be prepared for, or you might just, you know, kind of know that it's, there's a high possibility that something's gonna pop up that we didn't expect.
Right.
What do you think are ways that we can approach these to meet these goals or be opportunistic about different situations that arise?
I like that a lot because they are, they're where the rubber meets the road. And we, of course, all five of us are willing to help in any way we can, and we do. But, yeah, I I think that's an absolutely perfect way to do.
You know, the way that I see it working, it could be like just for the environmental discussion that we had about broad sustainability, environmental issues. It could be, so Jeremy's working on the efficiency Camden project, and we're gonna roll that out.
Right.
And maybe Dave St. Laurent identifies that stormwater infrastructure mapping is really important first step in better stormwater management practices. And Dave Bolstridge says, you know, more water quality testing on the river, whatever it is. So, you know, under the environmental banner, we have these kind of pretty specific activities that we're doing.
I agree. Because I think, you know, this, I have a very clear delineation in my mind between a priority and a goal. They're two different things. And to accomplish some of the specific goals, that's absolutely.
And that's just an example. I mean, I wanna do it better than that, but.
Oh, yeah. I get, no, I think that's a great idea. Allison, your comment?
I also think that we, maybe it's just I need a better understanding of it or, but I would like to revisit which department different things fall under sometimes. But, for example, the, you know, water quality monitoring in the river and harbor is, you know, that that makes sense as a wastewater function to a certain degree. It also makes sense as a public works function.
Or harbor.
Where do we, or harbor, although not as much. But, I mean, yeah, but.
Whatever.
They're not known for caring as much about the river as, I mean, yeah, anyway. Definitely overlap, for sure. That's the main point. And so where can, and also the difference between what we're doing right now and capital planning and budget priorities and I'm not stating this in a very.
No, I know what you mean. It is, it's. Where can, you know, overlaps and it's good to have clarity around roles and responsibilities within that overlap.
Right.
Where a specific action item is assigned to be focused on, we, I don't have a clear vision of that.
Yeah, it's, I guess it's like about the accountability around that, which I think is a good thing.
And even the dams, and why does it still make sense for that to be a wastewater function? Is that where we have the, or, I've been really impressed with a lot of this, the things that Dave St. Laurent has done too. There's just a lot of overlap in terms of who who could take on another, you know, we do bring on another employee who oversees them, who thinks they have the time to do that and the interest versus the.
It's interesting you bring this up because I was speaking to Jeff Scott the other day about some of the pathways projects.
Riverwalk, right, yeah.
Well, I mean, and it wasn't just the Riverwalk. It was the sidewalk projects as well. And he was saying, well, who do I speak to about this? And and it's kind of so layered because, you know, Jeremy's involved in some of the planning side of things. And then Dave St. Laurent becomes involved and. And then Beth becomes involved. And, yeah, it's, I mean, it's, and we try to make it as fluid as possible so that you could go to anyone and get the correct answer because we're all working together very closely. But I can understand that sometimes.
Oh, sure.
You know, if you're not doing that very well, you could end up in a situation where there's no responsibility and accountability.
I mean, when all of a sudden your, the Riverwalk hits up against a fence at the wastewater treatment plant. I mean, it's such a metaphor for, it's like, okay, hold on. How much has this planning been incorporated? And that is another thing that I wanna make sure that the the Riverwalk is specifically named as a project of importance for the select board. I mean, that would be my preference. It has been a long time community goal. And I think sometimes the pathways committee has been so sort of effective and efficient in their getting things almost, maybe not always in the most efficient way, but working around if it's whether it's a select board priority or not. But I think right now it actually is a select board priority.
Definitely.
And they're so dedicated and they've done, I mean, the, one of the beautiful things about the pathways committee is that they've had a great amount of continuity. But Jeff and Anita being there at the forefront, and there's this sort of incredible institutional history that exists on that committee.
But it quite literally can't go forward with, we got to the part of the river where there's no, it is so highly impacted by the dams and misformed wetlands and this, that we kind of have to solve that problem.
First, right.
And then making sure that we're not, you know, do we wanna try and change the state law first? Or do we wanna?
Right.
That's where I think a staff person also.
The guidance, right, yeah.
Makes sense.
As you deliver this to, it's all, it'd be great to get their feedback back to us. Because usually what happens in situations, let's say there's five things in one person's area, and they know they can only accomplish the following three or four in a given time period. That's feedback we need to have, too. So that's that's just good proactivity. They, no matter how many staff people you have, you can fill them up like a sponge real quickly.
Well, and also, I just want everybody to frame what they're doing in terms of these goals, too. Like, you know, I think that, for example, you know, Dave Morrison and the Opera House, they can see themselves outside of some of these things sometimes and not look at what they're doing as part of, you know, the economic development and, you know, creating some sort of vibrancy in the downtown and diversity of activities and opportunities for residents, so.
Example.
That is a regular example.
Looking through the upcoming events on the Opera House website. And I was like, I realized, that's just something I, on my list of things to do was to call Mark and gain a better understanding of the Opera House. And somebody cornered me the other day. I was like, why do we need three staff people at the Opera House? And.
I don't know.
I was tripping over myself like.
You can't answer everybody's questions. Is there anything else that anybody wants to add on this workshop?
Oh, I've got one more thing. Sorry, Mark.
No, you first.
Last thing. So the regionalization thing.
Yep.
I feel, I feel like this is, and this is another question, like, how? How far do you want me to go with this? Because, to be frank, like the towns in Knox County or even, you know, Lincolnville, other, you know, our neighboring communities, they're crying out for any. crying out for anyone to sort of like, and I found this with the streetlight project, anyone to say, okay, guys, let's do this together, and this is, this is how we'll go.
Collaborate.
I am more than happy to do that, and I feel like, you know, um, we've got some great partners in the surrounding towns, and they wanna work with us, but they, like, nobody has ever felt like they could be the person to kind of just say, let's do this thing together.
Right.
And like I said, I'm more than happy to do that, but I don't wanna do that if all of-
Yeah, yeah, it shouldn't all be on your shoulders, but, you know, I've thought about-
I mean, really, it's not a big deal, like, the streetlight thing, that's not a lot of extra work.
But some things can be a big deal.
Some things can be.
And they don't, and many of them don't have staff like we do, or yourself, and I, so we're, we, you really need to take the lead, we need to, in my opinion, take the lead with this, and, you know, I've opened up having multiple meetings with local, other chairs or other boards at that level, to talk about, just to introduce these topics, and I think that's, I, I believe it's very effective, in addition to the level of operations that you have, I, if you don't, if you don't lay stuff on the table, the concepts don't even come up, and nothing gets done.
Right, and I, I just wanna say, I don't mind doing it, but I don't want to do it unless the, like, all of you are saying yes, go ahead.
I think it depends on the, the specific situation. The one other thing I wanted to add is, this should not be a yearly meeting, this should be, I'd like to see it quarterly, because we sort of, um, focus on priorities and stuff, and waiting another year to get this done, I think takes too long, or at least twice a year. And then maybe not party, maybe it's a direction workshop, but it's a time when we can talk among ourselves about everything, and we don't have that opportunity at any other time.
Check-in.
That's true.
We can, of course, always just do that during Select Board meetings, too, where we say, how are we doing with this or that?
It's already late, but this, this gives us somewhere general, what's going on, where the public's invited, so, you know, it, it gives us a chance to, to knock around some stuff, I think it should be more often than once a year, it should be a direction meeting, maybe, instead of priorities meeting, however you wanna do it.
Well, it should be, we should focus on the actions that are ongoing, and that are related to, of course, not revisiting priorities and goals, Alison.
To go back to the regionalization thing a little bit, having delved into, I went to that, I'm so glad that Audra encouraged us all to go to that-
Knox County?
Whatever the meeting was called, it was very, you know, very, very poorly sold and explained, and all of that stuff, but it was really great to be able to just chat with some of the representatives from other towns that we don't normally get a chance to interact with, and then it caused me to go down the rabbit hole a little bit of trying to understand better, how does county government work?
Mm-hmm.
And I, so far, I'm a little bit alarmed, or just, eh, looking at the, you know, looking at that budget, looking at the amount of money that Camden-
Yeah.
-put in, looking, um, at the representation we have there, it's, uh, you know, as much as I, like, Randy personally, as a, as a friend, and we're really well-aligned on a lot of things and other boards that we're a part of together, um, I, I, I do not feel that Camden's positions have been well-represented at all, um, and we're missing massive opportunities for regional planning. It is crazy, there is nothing in that budget for regional planning, they have taken an approach of just every town for himself or herself, and, uh, let's, it, and, and it's causing problems. I think the rest of the-
Classic stepping over dollars to pick up nickels scenario.
Yes.
Very common.
And for things like, I, I, I mean, just public transportation, or, um, affordable housing, or the Airbnb issues, or climate change preparedness, um-
It should be on a county level.
We are, you know, even just our Knox County Hazard Mitigation Plan was really just kind of put together by, like, a bunch of-
At least.
It, it was mostly whatever towns realize should, they should participate, you know, some towns don't see it as an opportunity, and they don't realize until later that they missed it, um, and we, it's just, we should be allocating, the county should be allocating more resources for many different things, and it would, um, and so, and there was a lot of encourage, if anybody had, did you get a chance to listen to that budget committee meeting?
No, I, I really would like to.
It was really, um, it was really interesting, it was really frustrating also, can you make sure she doesn't get away, since you've gotten her excited enough to get up?
I think, I think you're-
But, so, we got Pat, you know, the, just this MaKed thing.
Yeah.
I found that really all the other, for the most part, budget committee members did a, a great job articu- they had all gone back to their Select Boards, and for them, can somebody grab her leash, and, oh, thanks, okay, maybe a little shorter.
Get her away from Jenna.
And, uh, she'll just get increasingly excited as she realizes she's being given a longer leash, um, but, uh-
I'll ruin my life.
Yeah, like the rest of us.
Um, shoot, the-
MaKed.
MaKed, Budget Committee.
All the other-
Well, they, so they had all gone back to their Select Boards, and, and were really interested in the, in the feedback, and many of them came back and changed their votes to support it, based on the fact that even, you know, even Select Boards that were gonna have to pay a little bit more, had never been a part of MaKed, they recognized the problem of the Midcoast Regional Planning Commission going away, and, you know, who's gonna update their shoreline zoning map, or different little things like that.
Right.
Um, the, the problem is also that the, so Randy saw it as the, um, he's not elected by the Select Boards.
Just by the same people that are elected.
Owe nothing to the Select Boards, in fact, may need to protect the electorate from the goals of the Select Board, um, he said he hadn't heard from a single citizen, Select Board members don't count as citizens, um, and, uh, you know, was the, and he's, and he's right, in the sense that he is elected by the, you know, by the electorate and by all the residents, and not by us, so it's, there's a fundamental problem with that charter there, because nobody has enough time to carefully follow the, you know, I thought maybe if, when we voted for a county commissioner, I had, I had a little bit of a chat with her, she seemed great, I haven't followed her much since, um, but, nobody's following that, nobody knows how county government, government works, nobody, so they talked also about the ambulance thing, they said, there was, there was inertia, and so I'm looping back around to what Audra said, there was inertia, um, toward this idea of more regional planning, even, you know, Andy Hart stated, um, quite well, that he's getting a lot of feedback about trying to do more, and that the next thing they're gonna do is try to at least get a meeting together of people to talk about EMS, um, and he said, watch for more of these things to happen, and so I-
Good.
Just to answer your question, I would like to see you dedicating time to pushing this at the county level.
Right, and I, I see that's what I can do, is sort of empower the county and MaKed to do these things, and, you know, quite honestly, a lot of this has taken a lot of time and relationship building.
Sure.
You know, now, now that I, I know all of the managers and all the other communities, you know, and we meet regularly, and we talk all the time, this has become easier.
Okay.
But, you know, they, someone like Andy really needs support from, like, me and Bill Post and Jay Filer-
Yeah, right, right.
Out there saying, yes, we want you to do this, our communities want you to do this.